Henderson City Council Meeting Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. It's called Order. First Order of Business is the minutes of the September 18th, 2024 meeting. Are there additions or corrections? If not, I will move to accept those minutes.
Second.
Motion made second and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion being carried. Public hearing for ordinances 244 to 247 regulating cannabis products in the city of Henderson. And, uh... Is there anything that has to be read out?
No, seriously, nothing changed from the last. But ordinance 244 is the ordinance. It's the actual ordinance that's going to regulate cannabis.
Yes.
Uh, 245, 247, all made. So any requirements?
Okay.
And again, there was no change from the last. The last one underlined areas are what is going to happen.
And we can pass this in one motion?
Yes.
I will make an emotion.
A second.
Motion made second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion made carried. And then, uh, we also have ordinance 248 amending, uh, 503.03 pertaining to dog ordinances. First reading. And Eric, did you have something to say about that?
Well, the only thing I could see of the rereading is, is the only thing is he did leave in here is that we were going to provide tags. And really, I didn't want that in there. I want people to provide their own information tag that has their phone number and stuff on it that says, and that we won't put the issue in.
That sounds like a plan.
So we'd have to just have that part of the change as well, just the part about the cost of the tag and fixing the tag. That's something that they would have to lay up themselves.
The owner needs to provide their own tag.
That's another thing that I see. Not that serious about changing any of the wording, but just the fact that we won't be.
I know at the time I mentioned that I would like to see the ordinance re- leashed or under control rather than just leashed.
I think that's a separate. That's not part of.
That's a different ordinance.
That's not part of this.
That's a separate one.
Yeah, we're not going to start that, yeah. All right. Well, this is just the first reading anyway, so.
How did we get the tags? Who did the tags for us? Did we ever do it?
I'm not sure. We made the ones that we have. But I know we can have made this one, maybe place those tags. Like with Walmart, you have to make the tags that is like the person's name and and there's some stuff. They keep them in the vet's place.
Yeah, that's the best because then you can get a Reagan's tag or whatever.
Yeah, we do the Reagan's. You can have the other information tag made at point two and so on. At the front of that.
Okay.
They usually give you a long day to take them in. Give you a shot to get some tags. Oh, yeah, they give you the Reagan's tag, but one of the other areas, hold on, or if we find one, we can give you a call, that kind of thing.
All right.
Okay, so we'll approve the first reading with that correction.
Yes. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made second and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. Chase Banning, Main Street, snowmobile.
I don't think Chase is moving tonight. This is what he submitted. It's a small increase from last year. Of course, last year it was only maybe $3,000 or something over that. Previous was maybe $30,000. So these are the previous rates for next year.
So these are based on rates, not? We don't have.
It's an hour day for Main Street. Um, some of it basically about $5.
Well, I like it. I like the way it's done.
It's better to do it this way. We do it otherwise. We do contract the worst stuff. Like last year did this also.
And he does. Good job now. Oh, absolutely. But he does Main Street, city parking area.
He does Main Street. Back to the alleys. So kind of that whole.
And then the sidewalks are the businesses.
Yes. And they can essentially, I think last year they were pushing straight from the sidewalk into the street. Which I don't understand this. I'll take that as a comment. But what about the sidewalk street? Is that a business project or?
Yeah.
I mean, in ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, it's the business owners responsible.
But it's kind of a separate deal anyway. I think, yeah, I think, yeah, he's got. Anyway, we're.
Perfect, I like it.
All right, so all we got to do is make a motion to. I will so do so. Motion made second and all in favor? Opposed, motion made and carried. All right, police chief, got anything new?
This is a September 2024 post report. It's a five public, assist public, seven animal complaints, 11 assist other agencies, one arrest, one domestic, four ordinance violations, two traffic citations, 14 traffic warnings, six traffic details where we're running traffic in specific areas, 88 direct patrols, 11 info-only civil matters, and 27 hundred calls. And we had one felony level theft, two citations for speed, and extra patrol with Main Street alleys and grounds and St. Joseph Cemetery is because we're having. We had another incident of graffiti on cemetery stones.
On the stones?
Yeah, they put, put, you know, on the tree, um, stones for some reason. Have no idea, so. Officer Snyder and Kowski attended a two-day standard field sobriety training course in the South Metro. All of our TASER 10 equipment has arrived and we're presently organizing with Fairfax PD for training. That's probably the next month, on Sunday next month. We're participating in the final roll-in at the end of September. That's, this is written, I wrote this all out. This marks the season of involvement of each roll-in. We've been in one to three year, excuse me, one to three officers at each roll-in. Will be going to receive and contribute to the Minnesota South Central Investigators Coalition and its bulletins. These updates come through email and assists off central Minnesota enforcement agencies to share information on criminal activities and identify suspects and be a form of criminal activity trends throughout the region. That's what we just cited for the last month. So that we're basically about region nine.
Do you, you guys didn't have tasers prior to this or you?
Yeah, we have a Taser. But now we're got new ones, so we have to retrain on it. So call it TASER 10. Actually, you can TASER fire people at one time if you want to.
And who wouldn't want to?
Well, also the squad has been moved up in schedule. It's going to be going in the first of November instead of the first of December. And hopefully they'll be done in a few months or two. But take that in next month to do that.
Were you telling me about the saturation thing they're going to do for, uh, drug driving?
Yeah, they're going to start, that's the county's starting that program. They got funds for that now too.
So we'll be, we'll be operating with Jake County?
Yeah, Jake will be part of that program. It's, uh, it's set up that they got money from the state to do saturation per area in the county. And the county will determine where they're going to do it, you know, like if they do it with Arlington or if they do it by Henderson, or if they do it, you know, Winthrop, wherever. And then there would be an officer that'll work with the county that the state will pay for his time. We have to initially pay them for the time they spend, but then we submit that to the county and then they'll reimburse that monies back to us then. Because it's through a grant through the state for that program.
So what's a saturation? What does that?
DUI mostly or impaired driving in most form, mostly.
It's like they'll have extra patrols out.
They'll have an extra car in an area, like if they're working Arlington, then like Jake would go over and work around Arlington for like four hours. It's tentative with planning on. They haven't put it out completely exactly how they're going to do it. That's actually.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chris?
I have a handful of things to talk about tonight. I'm going to start with pay application number 10 for the, uh, Street Project. Uh, this includes a slight reduction of the payment by 5% to 4% and essentially 99.9% of the original project. So, uh, there's going to be some punch list items. There's a punch list also included in your packet tonight. Those are generally not paid items. Um, and they did complete a handful, a little bit of work this week or will be soon anyways, uh, for some rip rap, um, over on South Street. That will be a paid item, but generally we're going to be fairly well complete this pay application to the point where the next pay application should be, uh, reduction retainage. Um, and then eventually a final pay application to fully pay off retainage and close up the project, um, once all paperwork is, is complete. So, um, you do that in front of you. Uh, if there's any questions for me regarding the application or the punch list? Okay? And I'll talk just exactly that kind of stuff or it's just part of your packet, so.
Incomplete. What did you say about the incomplete? They will be completed or that's, this is just a slot?
Yeah, the punch list is, is, has been assembled. Um, I did talk to James this afternoon as well, if he had anything on that. He doesn't have anything to add to it, as we told him. Um, so, uh, this, these are just things that need to be addressed. Something may have been addressed already, um, but, uh, we'll make sure there's a check mark next to it before final payment is made.
Did we ever determine what was going to happen with the, uh, was it the sewer line where the feeds were too deep into the main?
Yeah, I talked to Doug about that a little bit and I, I, I need a person to talk to the contractor, I think, just a good idea. So if everyone's not familiar, that's a, uh, we had pipe first sections of Santeria Super Main and the contractor dug down each one of them and then put on a saddle tap connection. Um, and when they installed that pipe, the four-inch service pipe into the main line, it went a little bit further than it's supposed to. Uh, and so I need to make sure is that that's not going to create a long-term maintenance issue for the city of Henderson. My biggest concern is that rags hang on it to where you can't get a jetter through it. Um, I know a jetter has gone through these sewer mains when they did their televising, so that shouldn't necessarily be an issue, but, uh, largely it's going to come down to what is acceptable maybe by, by the city to be pulling this long term. The connections they've made, uh, just the plastic pipe just went a little bit further into the main line and would be preferred, I guess. So, um, if you probably have a lot of those trip services in town right now, we call them protruding taps, um, but, uh, new work, so I'll make sure it's something that's acceptable for 80 years, like we're hoping, hopefully it'll be in the ground. So, um, I do need to probably follow up on that one. And more, largely just giving input my seat to if you've seen any videos or pictures or is that brought to you?
No, it's just described.
Described, okay. I think we need more than a description.
Pipe sticks too far in.
So is it on a lot of them? Uh, I don't know how many. I think they were, uh, on Minnesota, the steeper portion on the top. Um, I'm not sure if there's as much of an issue on, on Ninth Street at my first section, so, um, I think it's a new product used by the contractors, what it came down to, and they just want a little further initiative, so, um, I don't know if there's a lot of them, but I know there were, uh, there was more than one for sure. There are, if it had to be repaired, so what I would be asking for from the contractor, I guess, is just.
Like the four inch?
The four inch sticks too far in.
Four inch sticks in the main line. So my biggest concern is that, how big is the main? Uh, it's an eight inch. Yeah, eight inch inside diameter. Um, and if someone were coming in, you know, at an angle, so they should be above the full line in most cases, and especially how steep those pipes are, uh, I think the flow's going to be really shallow. But, um, you'll own that thing after the martis is completed. And let me sure that if, if, you know, you haven't mentioned even ten inch tonne load out the road, you're not having to dig it up yourself. So I, I should probably try to get a big copy of the video.
And that's the sewer line or the water main?
That's on the sewer, so Santeria. I do have, uh, I guess, past the Street Project, any other questions regarding that? Um, another item I have for you today, and I was hoping to have some from MinDOT, that they have, uh, a request for an extension on the closure of Ridge Road. Um, in the contract that SM Hedges has for that improvement, they have a 108 maximum closure of Ridge Road. As affected by their work, they're requesting an additional 100 days, um, to complete their work.
They need it because it was out of sequence. When they could only work back at the edge of town, they burned up the 100 days they thought they were going to need. But we still, and we'll end up having to have it closed when the levy is moved out and all that construction occurs again. So, um, it's, it's, I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, it's not going to be an additional 100 days right now. It's going to be 100 days when they aren't actively working. And there's a point where they build a system that are going to be, and they've already done this, they put a lot of soil down there, it's going to sit for a long time, that should be over all winter. Uh, but come next spring, when they're ready to do the rest of the levy, they have Saint Alar main which rolled up to the top of the hill. Um, they've got to close it for multiple, multiple reasons here. By contract, to MinDOT contract, there's going to be a lot more formal about if it's over 100 days, their expectation is that there's either a change order or a liquid damage. So, um, if the city approves that 100 days, they'll provide a change order format that has to be signed. And I think it's maybe what I'd ask tonight is if, uh, unless there's additional conditions, is just the 100-day extension is, um, recommended for a perol, just giving authorization to the city to sign it when it does come in. So you're not waiting for another month for a change in other council meeting.
And I would say no additional cost to the city of Henderson?
Correct, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
So it's 100 days once they start working on it in the spring? No, yeah?
It's 100 days on top of 100 days. I don't know how many days it's been closed already, so it's two hundred days.
Pretty close, it was like three months.
Yeah, yeah, so it is, is effectively closed for probably 100 days. If it's at 92 days, it might be 108 days next year. Uh, but, uh, that's my assumption at this point, they have not exceeded 100 days, I guess. Uh, if you want to make any conditions, you certainly have that ability. So if you want to say additional 100 days, but it must be complete by September 30th, 2025 or something like that.
Who maintains Ridge Road through the, like this winter?
Uh, I think in this case it'd still be yours, but I think anywhere that's actively under construction should be theirs.
So like the snow plowing is us?
I'm not worried about snow plowing, I'm worried about settlement between the two services, so.
Yeah, between the blacktop and the well, yeah, and, and erosion or anything that might occur. So it, it's an active construction site, so the contractor will, uh, still worship the roadway through there, just maybe that, just make sure they're, they understand as much.
Yeah, that's, that's, that would be my concern is that.
It's not going to be good when that water grabs up that.
No.
Yeah, it, it'll probably roll up the end there. Uh, we haven't had rain to test it yet.
Well, we know all winter long, it's going to get pounded down and there's going to be a lip there and I'd rather not have to worry about it with, with our equipment.
First thing I noticed was just not a sign, just even a bump sign or something.
Yeah.
Uh, that's one thing I noticed today is that it was, at night, there's not a visibility there.
And we probably should put some reflectors and maybe that's us. Uh, I'm, some people have always concerned about it getting, trying to find the bottom in the dark because there's no light out there. So we probably just need some driveway reflectors around the edge of it to tell people not to turn into the ditch.
Right.
I know I'm one person that did, so. They got it.
And there's some things, I mean driveway markers are certainly a low cost investment but out there, if it's something more than that, that you want me to make a request and MinDOT certainly can.
I think just enough to, just enough to tell people where not to drive.
Some sort of marking.
Yeah, so they won't get one to the ditch when it does.
Oh, I'm sorry, get a lot of the snow.
Yeah, yeah.
It's show me any super dangerous.
Yeah, yeah, once the snow's on, it's probably fine.
Yeah, and don't follow the path of the last person that went in the ditch. Uh, so I guess if that's, that's where I leave that, is if council needs to make recommendations, will we achieve order that would be coming through? That would be decided?
I have no problem with keeping about another 100 days.
I'd say not 100 days, but no additional charges to the city of Henderson.
And I can pass that on to your project manager. Last I did hear him want to talk to today is about the active transportation grant that you were awarded for the work on the regional trail connection, north side of town here. Um, and I guess my understanding, I'm talking about temporarily, is that, you know, there's a preference to have that work, well, construction's going to be occurring in 2025 regardless, but, uh, as far as the grant, you see that covers construction costs only, not engineering costs. So there's going to be a point of designing a project, um, so surveying the project, design the project, and going through any kind of reviews of the city, make sure it's what you want to be, um, and those costs would not be recoverable through the grant, so those would be city costs. Something is, there's a preference to have that work completed in 2025, um, just for the city's own finances. Um, and this kind of might go through, uh, what a schedule looks like for a project like this. So, um, the active transportation grant program is administered through state aid and so, uh, MinDOT state aid. Uh, MinDOT state aid is, uh, requires another level of reviews, so it's not just you go and put a project out there, build it and get money back. Uh, so there is going to be a few stages there, so it'll have to be reviewed by, uh, first off, um, civil county, civil county is your sponsor. It affects their entire road and then, uh, it also gets reviewed by MinDOT. So MinDOT state aid has a review process as we follow the whole, basically make sure the project's matching the requirements of the grant and state aid requirements. So, kind of working that into a, a project that was perhaps started or built by the end of 2025, I'll start that way. So if you wanted the project to complete by, say, fall 2025, uh, let's just say October, um, you probably had to have that project bid out by, from early August. Bidding process is about a month. Gets you to July for having documents complete approved. There's probably a lot of three-month process from starting design to getting approved design set, um, from both civil county and, um, state aid. So there's a possibility of starting work in probably the latest April of next year to still have a, an opportunity to bid it out and get it awarded by the end of the year. If there's a preference to bid it out any earlier than that, um, there would, there would probably be a topographic survey completed for snowfalls. So while we get to go out there and see what the edge of the road is and anything looks like, um, and, uh, if that's something you want, start that process now, um, there would be cost per to, to complete a survey or just kind of wait and, um, you know, maybe it went your way last year, we could do that kind of stuff in January, it's just hard, hard to say. I'd say, uh, the way that the bidding environment is right now, we've bid on a trail project that got exceptional bids because end of the year contractors were looking for work. So there's a potential to get better bids by waiting. If you're $320,000 in grant, I don't know the exact amount, but, uh, and it comes in at $310,000 because you got good bids, it doesn't really do you any favor, so you just get less grant.
Right.
Um, so, um, there's a little less benefit for getting a better bid unless we're able to do some sort of an alternate type thing or something like that, where you can add in work. But I just want to make you aware of the schedule, I guess, first off, if there's a preference to try to get it out earlier, um, just recognize, I guess, on our part, assuming that the city wants S H to complete the work, uh, we need to complete the survey now. It could go on a shelf and they sit there for three months if they had to, but, um, I say now, it just means before snowfalls really.
I think wait, wait.
So which trail are we talking about?
This is the one that comes from, it follows County Route 6 back.
Because I thought that was all done. Wasn't that part of the whole project and the?
No, no.
Or you just talked about the trail head? Trail head.
From, from the dike to the trail, yeah.
You've done an engineering survey for that part too?
Well, it's the, uh.
They can't just make the trail and.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely won't get the 320,000 dollars.
And it's kind of at that curve, right?
Yeah.
Right, and then where the parking lot is, that's the trail head.
So, so just a, just a little background on that.
That's done.
The, the, the trail from the levee in the north side, um, to Market Street, I guess the bridge that crosses the trail now, that is our project extent. Removal replacement of the trail that's in place plus the parking lot that's on the county road is the extent of the improvement. Um, and then setting up, uh, facilities to have a future, a concrete paths for future tables, picnic tables, signage, the other amenities for the, um, for the trailhead would be part of the project too, along with the two crosswalks of the county highway.
Okay.
So the, the extent of the improvements are obviously, that's Market, right? So Market, towards the north, um, stop removal and replacement, there's some things that might be worth looking at that trail because the trail's not in that shape in a lot of cases.
Market is by the fire.
Okay, one block, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Oak Street.
Oak Street, yeah. Uh, yeah, so I'm sure you're familiar with the bridge I'm talking about, the trail crosses there. From that point, uh, not clean the trail to Hummingbird Garden, but, uh, going west and then north along Highway 6, um, is the extent of that project, so, uh.
So the engineering cost follows?
Correct.
So the cost for the trail and the DNR grant and all that money we got did not cover that part?
No.
So DNR grant, so you receive two grants for the same work. Uh, the active transportation grant covers up to 100% of the construction work. The DNR grant requires a state, a non-state match, which DNR would obviously state. So, uh, the logistics of using both those funding programs on one project is very difficult because of the match requirement. But the, the DNR grant could be applicable towards the, if you want to bid a smaller separate project, that was maybe the amenities portion. Um, so I mentioned that this, MinDOT wouldn't pay for benches, they won't pay for pavilion, but you maybe will use DNR money for that. Uh, the DNR money does have some strings attached to it. You have to do, um, contact SHPO, which is the state historic preservation office, and you have to do a bunch of environmental work. Um, we're doing, we receive a same grant in the community, it's $8,000 just to do the seminals and all the work involved. Doesn't mean you can't get yourself, if you see a little way to kind of, um, reduce some of those front-end costs, but, um, a lot of it's, if, if you don't have, we're only talking about benches and some stuff that might be, you can do the tens of thousands of dollars and it may, it may not be worth using that. They still, they still have match requirement too.
Right.
But DNR will pay for engineering costs. But that's, that's kind of, I don't want to mix the two because the requirements for the DNR would make this, uh, state aid portion more difficult. And it could also go vice versa, they have different requirements, both state offices have different requirements. So you still have the DNR one out there and I guess we can see what they, what opportunity they might be to kind of use that money, but you definitely don't need the full amount that they awarded, um, unless they'll cover, you know, a million or something. No, no, for sure on that, but you still have a match.
So what are we kind of looking at here for engineering costs?
Yeah, I, I think for the point of surveying to delivery of a project reconstruction, I figure about $35,000 just roughly. Portion of that project costs, uh, if civil county bids a project, which I believe they would, um, that would, uh, would have some savings, I mean, including those savings in there if they didn't want to bid it, but. But I think it appointing construction, which Cibley County had indicated they provide construction administration and observation potentially. But I think it comes into their timing and their availability of staff and everything too. So these projects, you kind of have an economy of scale. A small project like this still has a lot of bigger costs front end unfortunately, and the state aid portion is the same no matter what that project had worked on.
Have you had any conversation with Tim Becker about the, they want to do concrete work and probably an overlay on County Road six to Main Street? Do you know if that's going to occur next year?
Not next year, that's that's not my understanding unless you've heard otherwise. But we did, we did ask about what they're planning to do. It was more of a rehabilitation project, but I don't think it was as soon as next year. As far as the active transportation grant program, you can use that concurrent with another state aid project. So if if Cibley County wanted to undertake part of the improvements, I'm not sure if they could. I don't know if you could build a trailhead and just do the concrete stuff, the crosswalks, for instance, under their project into the state aid number, same state aid number, make it a little complicated, but I don't have an answer to that, I guess. So we have a state aid project number for this improvement that is associated with the trail improvements essentially.
I mean, if we were to have a conversation with Becker.
Yeah, it was kind of like, you just complete the trail stuff and complete the trailhead and then the crosswalk improvements are completed when they come through. There would certainly be some efficiencies to doing that.
Is there a grant the city can apply for to help pay for some of this?
Yeah, it's small.
Is there any more? So you're, we can't take that DNR grant to to help the costs of the survey, the design and the engineering?
So the the improvements you're you're describing here is basically everything related to the trail. And I believe the DNR trail grant program is, came across like a, does one to one or three to one or something like that. I I'm going to, I mean, it was a ratio. It might be three quarters DNR and then the 25% has to be a city match. But the city match can't be state funds. So if you're using mine in MinDOT, that's called state funds then. So that's why I don't think you could use them at the same time. If you build a project, I don't think it could be associated with the trail project to use a DNR money just for engineering fees, I guess, if that's what you're referring to. Because the engineering fees have to develop a project. And if you aren't completing that project with that funding, we could, I guess, I want to talk in circles here a little bit, but it's had a discussion with Dale Nicholas with with the DNR and just kind of get an idea what they, is there a creative way to make it work? But everything I've I've heard and read and understood from it is that their funding is developing a product, not just the engineering portion. And the product is going to be a different product essentially.
Well, if we're not going to do anything until April, let's take them out.
Yeah.
They had to, they had to, the county's role in this.
So it looks like 35,000 to just get it started.
To get to the point of it, it's done, it's on a shelf, someone could build it, that's the idea.
But we won't start that process until April.
So when I say April, that's starting the actual work if if.
But if we start, put it on the agenda like in January?
Yeah.
Or do you think they're saying we should probably do it sooner than like?
Well, if you wanted it designed in the winter, we need it surveyed before it's snowing the grounds. Just we're trying to dig out and figure out where the ground is.
How much would just the surveying cost be?
I think I'm getting, it should be two to three days, maybe four to five thousand dollars.
I mean, it's intercal, we have to, we have to do it, I mean, at some point, I guess, or we need to investigate it a little bit more. But I mean, that was the whole, you know, design of this is the trail with the trailhead.
I mean, if I brought a proposal to your November council meeting that was survey only, you could say, well, prove this and we'll tell you when to do it. I mean, that's an option for you. If if weather looks great, they extend the forecast, then we'll just wait till January one to complete the work and at least get into your next next calendar year, if that's assistance. If there's a, you know, 20 inch blizzard in the forecast, we could always, we could pivot and make a different decision too.
All right, that's what we'll do.
I mean, because at the end, we have that whole trail that everybody works so hard to get the money to fund it. I mean, 35,000, I don't think is outrageous for the.
No, it's not outrageous to leverage 300 and some thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's around 10% of the construction costs is where we're we're sitting on that, which is pretty typical, I think, for a project like that. What do I have for you tonight then, unless there's questions for me, anything?
No, thank you.
All right, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. City attorney's not here, city administrator.
Um, I saw a few things. We are now getting a catchment. We did get that deferred loan from Minnesota housing for the project that my team is doing. I put on the, it's going to be deferred loan for 95,000. The city's portion that they're getting just for review is 80 back. And it's a little over, just about 55,000 square for the city's project. Black and white keys, third away goes. The water service installation did occur already with the project, building permit, heat wakers, color installation. And that's the city's, that's the city's match.
Okay.
Essentially, now at this point, we're waiting for contract, haven't signed anything yet. We're about two weeks in, it's typical, but it takes two to four weeks for that to come in. So I expect that to be here fairly soon. And once I get signed, my team can start work.
So there's nothing to sign tonight? Okay. Sounds good? You have two liquor licenses?
That's going to be me, across from the church, correct?
Across from the park.
Yeah.
We have two liquor licenses.
Licenses for organizing, wonderful, one hospitality. Here to review it and use good amount. I think it goes up fairly soon and I think all of them still have to submit their insurance and all that stuff, but.
Okay.
That's really good, stable, so maybe he's going now with approval.
I made a motion to approve the applications for those two liquor licenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all for the same funding, saying aye. Both, motion being carried, activity update.
Just a couple of things, he was going to stop them out again. I mean, we moved, which back in meetings, now November sixth, with a follow up on the previous meeting. Chase, I believe, has started his cleanup of the ditches. He's getting through that now, no issues that I'm aware of. Nelson's Park is closed, people are still coming, they won't be there for sure.
Really?
Oh, yeah, they won't be camping up there.
Really?
Yeah.
Is it a housing thing?
I think part of it is. We might have those debates at some point, because they're loving those month long stays and it's very cheap.
Yeah.
And we're actually running into probably some issues with that stuff, wanting to stick around. We might want to consider, you know, decreasing the stay total to two weeks before they have to move on and come back. So there's things to look at for next spring to get there. I don't really want to do anything now because we don't know if that sales type question.
Sure.
And all that, so I think we wait and all that. Uh, just, I have a meeting with elders on Monday to further discuss the financial management plan, grade three. Should start to get something from that in December, I think. Chris just won over grants. Shade tree bonding grant, we're kind of slowing down that a bit. We have to go back and look at some flats and grab the sidewalk of these trees before we actually start cutting things down.
Before we start cutting them down?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we can cut them down.
Yes, I think we will get them down before winter for sure. But we also want to make sure that when we're putting these back.
But we won't be putting the trees back until next year.
When these date properly have. Jason wants, he wants a clearer picture on where they are right now. So I don't think this paper will take very long. I got a bunch of maps from Chris today and should be able to locate those those trees fairly quickly.
Days rather than weeks?
Yeah, I think so, okay.
All right. Mayor, continuing to have discussions with the Iron Corps of Engineers to push them towards a study, they're pretty much agreed to do the study. But then there's a funding mechanism and blah, 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 blah. It'll take too long for comfort, but eventually they'll do it. Until we have data, there's nothing to push, so. City council, any sort of report?
No, for the splash pad, our fundraiser we had, October 12th, was well attended. Made, we were happy with the turnout, made a little bit of money. The Lions are donating their funds from the spaghetti feed this Sunday night. And then they're also donating proceeds from the bingo. We've got more brick orders coming in and a few sponsorships, so we're starting to get a little more momentum.
So the grant, you know, what are?
We're going to apply for the DNR grant again. I think we're going to do the early admittance in December. Then they'll preview it and then let us know if there's anything they want us to change again. But we're going to resubmit and we do have one into T-Mobile right now too and to Smith. So we're always looking for grants.
And isn't Smith?
Smith, or she?
Smith.
Smith, Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation.
Aren't they doing a meeting up here at the?
In April.
In April they're doing one here?
They're, they're, they're staging at the Hummingbird Center in April.
So, yeah, can do some lobbying.
Let the little kids run around with.
Yeah.
Have a complaint with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, financials, 2024 bills and cash balance.
Bills this month, including the the project, 262,000, eight thirty one forty four cents. It probably next month I'd expect about 200,000 remaining on the project. There'll be some additional distractions from the town that should be checked out. So for a little bit, maybe be able to get a real estate. Cash balance at the end of September, 255, 5898. Half of these bills are probably coming in under a quarter dollar cash right now, maybe today. But, you know, pretty much every month, there's 60,000 coming in from utility revenue for cash balance. We will expect nine to 600,000 in December, LGA, property taxes and such. And then after that, just further ahead, we're talking about the tax implications you can get next, early next year with elders to double cash flow until, until I get my payments ready and get.
All right. And the bills are good to pay? All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye aye.
Both. Motion made and carried, old business. Going once, going twice. New business?
The speed signs up from the speed signs. Didn't we talk about the, I haven't looked at the secret on the other model, talking to Chris. It was very much not checking into that. Now we're going to put a time to that too. A long channel or something. Because if no way of course, it can be overweight if you don't have a stop.
Yeah, what is the time tree on that?
Ten, and I think we said we were going to do seven, is what we've talked about.
I think we talked about it, do we know what it is?
I thought, yeah, did we say it was like a, yeah, yeah, but.
Nine, okay, but we said seven. Maybe verify with him and make sure they don't put the signs up.
Well, I'm finding seven. That's not going to affect.
We should be able to determine, no matter if it's supposed to be built for nine times, we should be able to determine if seven or five or whatever.
All right, all right, all right, all right. I'm interested. I got a dumpster locked in for six months one time on a four time over. Can we get it up? All right. Revised meeting schedule?
Just had this one from the assessor for the.
Oh, yeah.
The local work of equalization meeting next year. This is the date they've set so far, this is going to work, going to let them know at this time.
So we do, do we need a motion to?
Um, yes, I would think.
I do need a motion to approve that? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve April 23rd, 2025, as our equalization meeting, second?
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye aye.
Both, motion made and carried. Now, set historical preservation commission meeting. Do we have a membership list?
He does. Just ready to appoint some new people.
So currently, now Julie, chairman, is chair, Pat's chairman, Arlene, who's Julie, well, Terry will be. I don't know, I mean, I've tried to contact all of them and basically Terry and Jeff and.
Well, Arlene doesn't live in town.
Arlene is old, she's, she's home.
Yeah.
Do you know where you're at?
No, I think I can go to her and do it again.
Arlene just has a different daughter than she used to have, I can give you that.
Well, she lives in Leesure now.
I know, but she's still.
She can't be out, I think you'd have to be in city, is it city limits or Henderson area?
Must be Henderson area because Jerry's, Jerry's not in.
Henderson township, but he's like right outside Henderson.
Yeah, right. Let's do that.
I don't know if you want to appoint some more before we have a meeting or if we just set a meeting order. I think technically there should have, there should have been a meeting for the HBC by whoever first. As a requirement to the state for reporting, I don't think that, I mean, I could.
So technically, I would still send it to them and then if they don't want to do it, they need to resign.
Right.
Like official resignation and then reappoint. So I don't know if you can set a meeting over next weekend?
Never got together.
Oh, the last time was when we talked about the recording studio. That never happened.
Three years ago.
It wasn't that long ago.
Wasn't it?
Maybe, I don't know.
I bet it is, it's pretty close, it's two and a half.
Yeah.
So we need it. Yeah, send it out, why don't you set a meeting, we'll send it out after they come back and they don't want.
If they don't, they need to actually give you a written notice.
And then we'll appoint. All right. Any other business?
We do need to set a time for this 248 public hearing. The one that was just discussed.
Now, this is the draw order?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's do it at the beginning of.
Next month's meeting?
Next, November 3rd.
November 20th?
Should have been first. Before I'm considering.
That's it, do you need a motion for that?
Oh, sure.
I'll make a motion. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Both, motion made and carried, meeting in January.